Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank everyone for participating on this virtual hearing regarding the Bill 184-36. This virtual hearing is now called to order and today's date is September 14, 2021. And the time now is 10:09. The Committee of Public Safety, Emergency Response, Military Veterans Affairs, Mayor's Council of Guam, Public Transit is conducting this virtual hearing today on Bill 184-36. For the record and in conformance with Section 8107 of Chapter 8, Title V, GCA, the first public hearing notice was sent out on Tuesday, September 7, 2021, to adhere to the five working days requirement. And the second public hearing adhering to the 48 hours notice was sent out on Friday, September 10, 2021, and in according, in addition to these notices, it was also sent out to all the media and posted on the Guam Legislature's website. Now, I will call first off those that want to testify for for Bill 181, and then after that, we're going to give some time to the to the author of the bill, Senators Augustine, but first I would like to go ahead and allow those that are here to testify. And I want to start out with Abe Mora. Mr. Mora, go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Abraham Seymour Jr. I am a Gold Star family member. Before I start, let me tell you a little bit about my family and me. Came from military of family of five who have served this great nation of ours. My father, Abraham Seymour, retired chief in the United States Coast Guard. My sister Kathy is married to Manuelito Aquino, who retired chief, United States Navy. My brother Michael Moore, retired lieutenant colonel in the United States Army Reserve. And I retired in the United States Air Force Reserve as senior master sergeant. My youngest brother Sampson Moore, who honorably served, was killed in action on July 10, 2008 in Babel, Kinni, Babel, Kinni, Afghanistan, along with Sergeant Brian Leon Guerrero. While my family and I continue to grieve for the loss of Sam, it's comforting to know that our fallen service members, men, women, are being remembered and honored for their sacrifice. As a member of the Gold Star family, I truly support Bill 184-36 to use a portion of Skinner Plaza to build the Guam Pacific Island Regional Gold Star Family Memorial Monument alongside the honored men and women of the Purple Heart Memorial at Skinner Plaza in Agana. This monument will help honor the families of the fallen in our region who have given one of their own for our freedom. This memorial will be place will be a place for us to visit, to pay tribute, to remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice and help ensure our future generations never forget. I would like to thank the Herschel Woody Williams Foundation for generous support and all those who contributed to making this happen. I'd also like to thank the military ordered Purple Heart for giving the portion of their area next to them. In addition, I would like to thank the Guam Legislature for their support in hearing our testimony and honoring the Gold Star families. And lastly, to all the Gold Star families, you're in our hearts and we will never forget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mora. First off, we're gonna just go, let me allow the the author of the bill, Senator Joseph Augustine, to just present a just a little introduction regarding this bill.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jesus Marcy for holding this hearing on Bill 184-36. You know, Bill 184-36 is an act to authorize the military order of the Purple Heart. Guam Chapter 1315 to use a portion of Skinner Plaza to establish the Guam Pacific Island Regional Gold Star Families Monument honoring Guam's Gold Star service families whose sons or donors made the ultimate sacrifices in the service of our island and country. The bill seeks to authorize the Gold Star families in conjunction with the military order of the Purple Heart to utilize a 25 foot by 25 foot section of the Skinner Plaza in a in a garden. It will ensure that the plan is submitted and approved by legislation that no government funding will be used to construct the monument. For many decades, people from Guam enlisted and honorably served in our armed forces, United States Armed Forces, who desire to promote and maintain peace in our country and our island. We are proud of our sons and daughters who put on the uniform and represent our people with pride. Unfortunately, we've experienced the loss of many loved ones who were killed in action, making the ultimate sacrifice in service of our people. These heroes are survived by families who are honored with the distinction as a Gold Star family. Our Gold Star families are among the thousands who experience the loss of a child while in active duty service, providing security and defense during the atrocities that we experience in our world, working to bring peace and harmony to peoples of different nations. Several years ago, the work of Woody Williams Foundation found its way to our shores with the mission of honoring Gold Star families. The project will be funded by the National Foundation established to pursue specific endeavors and goals through the vision of the Medal of Honor recipient, Herschel Woody Williams. Mr. Williams is now 98 years old and is in the United United States Marine Corps and served in liberation Guam in Battle of Iwo Jima with the 21st Marines, 3rd Marine Division, and is a sole surviving Marine with World War II to wear the Medal of Honor. To date, the foundation has established 87 Gold Star Families Monuments in the United States, with 77 monuments underway in the in the United States and one territory to represent the families of Guam Pacific Region. And will feature the names of the men and women who served and perished in the various conflicts, honoring their families for their love and support during their deployment. This is an honorable thing to do. Honoring the families whose loved ones passed through that should always be something we do to keep their memory alive. I am sure that the Gold Star Memorial will provide another way for us to remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our island and nation. I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, for your support as a co-sponsor. Also thank Senators Amanda Shelton, Senator Delina Nelson, Senator Clint Regal, Senator Tony Anna, Senator Frank Blas, Senator Jim Mullin, Senator Chris Drenas, and Vice Speaker Tina Tina Munya Barnes for their support as co-sponsors as well. I look forward to hearing additional testimony as Mr. Ape Mora has already provided one in today's hearing and as that we expeditiously report this bill out of your committee for session so that we may continue to honor our Gold Star families this month on September 24, which is nationally dedicated as Gold Star Family Day. Jesus Marcy, Mr. Chair, and just to advise you that I am communicating with the administration that hopefully when this bill comes out as fast as possible and goes to session, we will have a site dedication at the Skinner Plaza. The administration is in full support of this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senators and Augustin. Before we go on, I would like to include my the Speaker of the 36th Guam Legislature, legislature to be one of the co-sponsor also. Speaker Theresa Dreyer, Theresa, if you would accept that. I appreciate it.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, what we'll do is that during session, I'll have her added on because she did, she was going to introduce one is that it was colliding with each other, but we're able to get this one through and and we're both in both support of the of the Gold Star families.
Okay, adding people on, Mr. Chair, I too would like to be a co-sponsor. We were given cer- certain of us were not given the opportunity. So I would like to take this opportunity now to also include myself as a co-sponsor to this measure.
You got it, my friend, you got it. Next in line, I want to call on Mr. Bill Condon. Bill, go ahead, sir. Bill, I think you're in New York, sir.
Can you hear me now?
There we go, Frank, there we go.
Okay, I'm in full support of this of this bill. I want to thank Major Team Ono or the project officer for this monument for pushing this program forward. He has worked tirelessly to ensure that we will have this monument. Before I go any further, I want to challenge everybody and I want to recommend to everybody that every single day that we wake up, we take a moment a few seconds to thank everybody in the military serving right now, all our veterans, active duty families, because they're the ones that are keeping our freedom every day. So if you have time every day, the two seconds, say a little prayer for all of them. Thank you so much. You know, the family keeps the fabric of her of her military together. I remember a couple of times when I was in Nam, I almost bit the dust. And it was my family who who got me together, got my nerves down together. And I was able to get out of there with my mind intact. So it was, it's the family. I was also separated from my family for one year. And I've gone numerous TDIs, I've gone all over the world. And it is my family, it is our families that ensures that we continue to press on and get the mission accomplished. This is very important and it really is an honor to to be here today and support this bill. It is, it is very important to recognize all of them. So once again, I'm in support of this bill. And I want to thank all of you senators who co-sponsors this this bill and Tim Ono, thank you so much.
Bill, thank you very much. We're gonna go to Mr. Ono right now. Since Bill, you mentioned, I got the word that he's gonna do a present, a visual presentation. Go ahead, Tim.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for the opportunity to be able to provide a short presentation and testimony. I think there was a video I showed or I sent into your office, sir. If you will play that video before I continue on, I really appreciate it. I think your audio visual folks have it, so they receive it.
Our mission is to honor, recognize, and serve Gold Star families and the legacy of their loved ones who've paid that ultimate sacrifice. And that really started with seeing a need. Really, one of the initial visions of our founder, Medal of Honor recipient, Woody Williams, was to develop and establish a place that belongs to Gold Star families, a place that they can go to meditate, to honor, to remember their loved one.
When they see that monument, that memorial, it actually represents their loved one. The grief is still there. That now there is something there that represents their loved one, which gives them some assurance that that loved one is not going to be forgotten. I have been called over the years, many times, a hero. I'm not. The heroes are those who never got to come home. They are the true heroes of America because they gave their lives for her and for us.
We as a country need to honor that sacrifice. We as a country need to recognize that sacrifice.
The Woody Williams Foundation. The cause is greater than I.
Thank you for playing that. And I also want to thank you, Chair Chairman, for the opportunity to be able to just say a little words, a few words. Unfortunately, I didn't write out anything in particular for a written testimony. I want to speak from the heart. I've been at this for about three years now. And a lot of folks that I've got to meet at the honor of meeting are a lot of these Gold Star families. Throughout this process, I was able to encounter and meet up with several Gold Star families. I still stay in touch with some of them. One of my friends that I had served with in my unit, Major Cole Hogan, was killed in the Pentagon. I still stay in touch with his widow. She's since remarried. Major Cole Hogan and I were teammates in the same unit. I had the honor of designing and helping put together a memorial wall for our first special forces group at Joint Base Lewis McCord. And one of the hardest things to do is just be there with the Gold Star families. I got involved in this by accident. I had always wanted to put together something, but it's taken me a little while. But there are several folks that I encountered that throughout the process that without them, I think we wouldn't have gotten this far to get this bill introduced. A couple of them I definitely want to mention is or Senator Joe Sinoveste. Thank you so much for introducing this bill. But the guy that introduced me to him is Mr. Francisco Florrick. Thank you for that. The other folks that really has an impact on this or were instrumental is the Vice President of the Military Order of Purple Heart, Mr. Rick Cruz. I'm not sure if it's online, but I think he wanted to also try to log on. He's been trying. He may have a little work to say too. And of course, a lot of the Gold Star families. This Gold Star family is not just going to be for loved ones or Gold Star families in this region.
Yeah.
But it's going to involve Gold Star families who have relocated. There's some Gold Star families have since relocated from the States, they're here in Guam now, they call Guam their home now. So it's going to be for them. I'm originally from Pon Pe. I am Pon Pean, but I was born in Guam, so I guess I consider myself the son of, son of Guam, the son of these folks here. I am that crazy guy that falls out of a plane, jumping that large flag. And every time I do that, I do that in honor of Gold Star families and a lot of my friends that are no longer here and able to be around. And I know there's a lot of challenge stuff happening right now with this COVID and a lot of frontliners out there. My wife is a frontline provider. But this passion of mine to just try to get this thing off the ground and built over at Skinner Plaza really would not have been possible without my paths crossing with Senator Joseph Augustine. So I can't thank you for that enough for that. The other thing I want to mention, there's been quite a few folks who have contributed. My personal friends throughout the United States have contributed immensely financially and and just encouraging, you know, not to give up and just keep pressing forward. I don't want to go into details about how far, how many times this thing has bounced back and forth between Skinner Plaza, Aston Park, and Loop 2, to wherever. But I also want to thank the Gold Star families who have not given up. One of the hardest things I've had to see is these Gold Star families who are not around, who I've met throughout this process. And one of the saddest things I've heard from another Gold Star mom was before that person passed away, she said, you know, I'm tired. At this point, I don't care what memorial, what monument. It doesn't matter, but she's not around anymore. Hopefully, her children will be able to to see this and be around for that. And another one who I knew that I met at the honor of meeting who worked at Revon Tax. She lost her son. He's not around as well. So this is not about having an R or a D or an I behind your name. It's just about the families that are out there, they're still struggling. There are memorial days every day. And if we can do this with you guys' support and and this bill, then there's no really reason that we shouldn't make this happen. You heard the little video that Woody Williams played. I have the honor of actually talking with him, but I didn't meet him in person. But his grandson, who spoke there, Mr. Chad Graham, and I call each other brother with both a rapport now. And Woody has also promised this that he will never go back to Iwo Jima. He, by the way, is the last surviving Medal of Honor recipient from the Battle of Iwo Jima. He's also the last Medal of Honor recipient of World War II, the entire World War II. He is part of the greatest generation. He's not only that, but he's a Guam liberator. He recounted his experience coming up Aston, storming the beaches of Aston while some of his fellow Marines fell as they worked their way up Nimitz Hill. So this is not only for Woody, but this is for pretty much all the Gold Star family. And the reason we're kind of almost pressed for time is because Woody turns 98 on the 2nd of October, 98 years young. But if you hear and speak, you wouldn't believe that this guy is 98 years young. I think the Lord has has kept him here for this mission. I'm not sure how much time I got left, but we're trying to do this for everybody, especially Woody, especially all the Gold Star families and some of the ones that are not here, their families. Like I said, I'm originally from Pon Pe. I've communicated with everybody from the FSM consulate, the FSM president, the Palau former president, Mr. Kamse Chin, some CNMI representative, Mr. Ivan Blanco, the late Ivan Blanco, who I just learned to pass away as well. And you know, especially with RMI, in every single island, there is a Gold Star family from those islands in this region. So it doesn't matter who plants this first or builds this memorial first. The fact is, we need to get it off the ground. And and I'm not going to ask for a penny from Gold Guam. People are already contributing. The big donors, I thank them for doing that. Eastwest Rental, Mr. Jim Atkins, Nissan Triple Triple J, these are all like platinum donors and that recently GTA has come on board to be a platinum donor as well. Now, you can visit the website, Herschel Woody Williams Medal of Honor Foundation, and click on monuments and you'll see the project that we've been working on. I want to thank all those who are part of our team. Brigadier General Retired Diamond Cruz, Armelyn Luhon. Of course, a lot of the Gold Star families. My cousin, retired Marine Corps Sergeant Major Joe Witt, also from Pon Pe. But those are the folks that I really want to thank. They're the ones that worked behind the scene to make this possible. We did a fundraiser, the first fundraiser we did was in December where Woody Williams got a chance to address all those bikers from Freedom Riders as they get ready to step off on their 22 mile, 23 mile. And then in February, my son and I did a gate to gate whole march where we carried, we carried the Gold Star flag, we carried the Blue Star flag, Guam flag, FSM flag, and all those US flags. As we walked, I carried about 55 pounds, my son carried 20 pounds, walked from the main gate of Anderson Air Force Base down to the main gate of Naval Base. Finished over there. We had the honor of having some of the Gold Star families at the finish line. Anyhow, that's, that's pretty much my comment. I didn't really write anything out. I'm speaking from the heart. I want to thank Abe for being able to also address Ms. Dorothy LaCola was was going to, but she had a medical appointment, so I want to thank her as well. But thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair, Speaker. I thank you for signing on, co-sponsoring this as well. And all you senators who have co-sponsored this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Tim. Now we'll go to Mr. Florrick. Mr. Florrick, Frank, go ahead, sir. Frank, can you check, I think you're in New York.
Okay, there, thank you. You know, I, I, what I did is I went ahead and I submitted a a written testimonial and I'll just go ahead and read it. And I did that for a reason. For those that know me, I can sit here and talk for hours, especially with something I'm very passionate about. And and I just became passionate about the Gold Star Memorial. Not, not longer than about a month and a half ago, after meeting Tim Ono. So let me go ahead and start, Mr. Chairman and members of this committee. Good morning, my name is Francisco Florrick. Most call me Frank, and I'm here representing the Brotherhood of Veterans Motorcycle. I would like to begin my testimony by saying thank you for hearing this bill in anticipation of a positive endgame. Thank you, Senators Sinoveste, for being the author and all the senators that joined in at being co-authors of this very important bill. The members of the Brotherhood of Veterans Motorcycle Club fully supports Bill Number 184-36. And of course, we support it with a few minor adjustments to the bill that would really meet the needs of the Gold Star family, Families Monument. First off, what is a Gold Star family? I believe being a Gold Star family is an honor that no one family wants. Why? Because to become a Gold Star family, you would need to have lost a spouse, son, daughter, or a grandchild as a fallen service member who gave the ultimate sacrifice while serving in time of conflict in support of this great nation and our islands. Several months ago, I had the opportunity of meeting with Tim Ono, a retired Army officer who served alongside these brave young men and women whom some paid the ultimate sacrifice for this country. Some from Guam and others throughout the country. He has staked on the biggest challenge of his life, and that is to get this memorial for Gold Star families built here on Guam. He has started the movement to raise whatever funds are needed. He just needs the location to build the monument. This bill will allow that location. Thanks to the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Guam Chapter 1315, they have offered to have this location adjacent to their monument at Skinner Plaza by asking this body to amend Article 6 of Chapter 76 of Title 21 Guam annotate by the introduction and passage of this Bill Number 184-36. All they are asking for is an additional 25 feet in diameter to make this memorial a reality for the Gold Star families. I'm further suggesting that the bill reflects a name change from the Guam Pacific Island Regional Gold Star Monument to the Pacific Islands Gold Star Family Monument. This encompasses all Gold Star families in our region to include Gold Star families from Guam, the CNMI, FSM, Republic of Palau, and the Marshall Islands. In closing of this testimony in favor of this bill, the building of this important monument for the Pacific Islands Gold Star families is to recognize and honor those who have survived, whether it's a grandparent, parent, spouse, or child. This monument is important to honor the families of the fallen. Just a few days ago, I read this inscription on a pin that was presented to me. And the inscription read, "A tribute to those who sacrificed a love for our freedom." I, I implore and ask the senators to please pass this bill as quickly as you can. It's important, and I, I, I think it's really, it's more important for the families that were left behind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Frank, and I'll, I'll be getting together with senators and Augustin and we'll work on your request. And we'll see if we can work on it and make it a reality. Thank you very much, Frank. And next in line, I want to call on Mr. Joseph Augustine, the former director of the Veterans Affairs. Joe, go ahead, sir. And next in line, I want to call on uh, Mr. Joseph Augustine, the former director of the Veterans Affairs. Joe, go ahead, sir. Joe, can I I think you're in meal, Joe?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you for this opportunity this morning. I want to thank the the author of the Bill, One Eighty-four dash Thirty-Six. The sponsor and all the 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 co-sponsors for supporting this bill. You know, um, like Mr. Arnold. And many of the other veterans that spoke before me, I. I didn't put anything in writing and and I just want to do this by heart. Um. I am the currently the Vet Commission Chair. For the Guam Veterans Commission. I'm also the president for the Third Marine Division Association here in Guam, the Guam Chapter. I'm a Desert Shield Desert Storm. And also a thirty year Marine veteran. So you know, the the difficult part of this bill is when you you hear people veterans before you. And the emotional part starts taking its toll. You know, none could ever imagine. Uh, losing a loved one. While serving in the military. I could only imagine that their lives are changed forever. So in saying that, I did mention that I did thirty years in the Marine Corps and I did serve during Desert Shield, Desert Storm. I cheated one of the first individuals into the Persian Gulf from Okinawa. And the reason why I continue to fight for what I believe in a very discreet way. Is that I believe with the service that I provided. Our country and the island. Gives me strength to continue to fight for those that. Are weaker than than I am, those that are not able to fight for themselves, fend for themselves. And especially, you know, those that. Lost their life. For their ultimate sacrifice. You know, the old saying, oh, gave some, some gave all. I hope that I do not experience that. But in saying that. You know, I want I want to continue to forge forward and continue to help our veterans, their family, their loved ones, and even those that. Have given up their lives to not forget them. At all costs. So why is this monument important? This monument is important. Because you all as lawmakers, you all as citizens of Guam. It's important that you partake. In doing your part. And your part is. To complement the needs of the veterans and their families, and in this case, the Gold Star family who have given their all. My part as a veteran is to do the same and more. As I stay very, very quiet in my own ways. I do a lot for our veterans. And I do that because. I believe. In the sacrifices that they give. I believe in doing the right thing. For their family and themselves, and I'm hoping that. You all as lawmakers do the same thing. The one thing that I always like to go back on is. Why do we, why do we make this so difficult? It should not be difficult. It should be our duty and responsibility to do whatever it takes. To honor, to pay tribute. To console. To be the solution for healing and peace for those that. Have lost their loved ones. Last Friday, I had to drive to Aggett. Because a good friend of mine, who's a Gold Star recipient, didn't return my phone calls after three phone calls. And I had to drive to Aggett because I just knew that it wasn't right. So when I mentioned the efforts of this monument, he was pretty much aware what was going on, but I could tell you. What ignited. The pain and anger and more so pain in this individual. Is the recent. Activity that happened in Afghanistan. So many of you all senators that are veterans and those of you all that are not veterans. I mean, you could be part of the solution by consoling, by just talking to people. And just doing things the best you could to let them know that. There's good things ahead. And that the sacrifice and the loss of their loved ones will never be forgotten. So what does this monument mean to the family? It's a place where they could go and console. It's a place where they could go and heal and find peace. It's a place where they could go and pay tribute. To their loved ones. And be able to sit. And pray. And make ends meet and say thank you for their service. This type of loss is a difficult thing to heal, if it's ever going to heal. My experience of thirty years. Many of them won't heal. But I asked. Each and every member. Of the Gold Star family, and I put up a challenge to all veterans to do the same. To reach out. To those that have lost. And console and let them know that they're not forgotten and that we thank them for their service. Mr. Chair. The author of the bill. And all the sponsors and co-sponsors. There's no reason why they cannot be fifteen senators to sponsor and co-sponsor this bill. I thank you for your efforts and I'm done with the messages, Massey. That's all I have.
Cheers, Massey, Joe. Thank you very much. Actually, we're going to go to my good friend Melvin Wamp. Melvin, go ahead, sir.
Up the senators and veterans, thank you for your contribution. I wanted to thank you for having me here. I wanted to just preface my testimony by saying that. You know, in principle, we support the intent of this effort. I don't think that there's anybody in here that argues that, uh. You know, we should not make effort to uh. Honor these individuals, these families, and treat them with dignity. Um, however, my testimony will be really more on the policy and planning side of it. I think that my only, my only concern is the longevity of the memorial and the, um, given the. The planning behind it and, you know, it's. It's something that I I think is should be. Considered and and a part of the process and in how, you know. How long can we maintain a memorial and is there, is the, would the potential memorial have, be threatened to have to be moved? At some point, which I think, you know, is is not dignified treatment for these recipients to move a memorial. Um, I I submitted a copy to Senator Turlahe along with the attachments of the, some of the complimenting zoning laws. Okay, um. The Department of Tomorrow Affairs supports the intent of Bill One Eighty-four dash Thirty-Six to establish a memorial monument honoring all Gold Star family members. Whose son or daughter may have made the ultimate sacrifice in service of the country and island. DCA provides the following thoughts and considerations. Public Law Thirty-One dash Two Three Two transfers the entire Skinner Plaza Block Four Hagatna. For the express purpose of constructing a Guam and Chamorro educational facility, also known as the Guam Museum. Uh, front office to exhibit uh, Chamorro history through historical artifacts and telling the journey of our land and her people. Likewise, in order to retain Skinner Plaza as a central park, the development plan provided for open space and the retention of certain memorials and monuments. Nevertheless, Skinner Plaza still remains as a central city modern mark for residents and visitors to enjoy. When the city of Hagatna Lot and Block System was created, Skinner Plaza was planned as a public gathering place for all types of events. Having memorials and monuments has limits and restrictions on what type of gathering could be held in Skinner Plaza. Moreover, the Skinner Plaza through Public Law Twenty-Four dash One One Zero was designated as part of the Guam Capital District and shares the rich cultural heritage. Of our other Guam landmarks and icons. Nevertheless, due to the central area within our capital city of Hagatna. Skinner Plaza has been used as a default site to house all types of memorials and monuments, although. The Plaza de España, Paseo de Susana and other sites within our capital city are also available. Skinner Plaza with the Guam Cultural Guam Chamorro Educational Facility currently has the following memorials and monuments. There are six in total Skinner Plaza Monument, the Wake Island Defenders from Guam Monument, Guam Heroes Memorial, Korean Conflict Monument, the Purple Heart Monument, and General Douglas MacArthur Memorial. It should be noted that the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority, also known as HRA. Was given authority to redevelop and restore the city of Hagatna inclusive of parks and memorials. Its proposed Hagatna redevelopment master plan provides goals and policies dealing with Guam and Hagatna's. Three thousand eight hundred year historic historic legacy and provides in Chapter Two Historic and Cultural portion of the land plan, a preservation disposition and planning framework. Of her heritage. Chapter Two Historic and Cultural provides. Uh, goal HC-six to enhance monuments of historical and cultural value by regulating the location, density and design of monuments and public spaces. With its Parks and Monuments Policy. It states that the city shall establish money, a monuments committee to oversee all new monuments and the preservation of existing monuments. The monuments committee shall produce an inventory of all existing public and private monuments and memorials in Hagatna, including their current condition, relevance and recommendation for preservation. The city shall regulate and play at the placement of all new monuments in Hagatna's public spaces through a review process by the monuments committee. And the city council. And lastly, the city shall encourage utilizing Hagatna's monuments for the edification of citizens and visitors. Moreover, the HRA with its Contractor Matrix Design Group. Worked with the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Land Management to identify land areas for many parks or green spaces that could be used to house monuments and memorials properly. Moreover, as provided in Public Law Thirty-Three dash Two Two One, the HRA would provide as part of the Hagatna Master Plan, the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners. Shall provide a monument and parks component. The bottom line when dealing with memorials and monuments is that we must ensure that monuments and memorials retain a significant place in our urban policy. With urban design certainly a valid preservation concern. In many cases, and true in our island of Guam, we fail to consider the monument or the memorial in long-range planning. Decisions are often made on an ad hoc basis, missing the larger picture of how these pieces of cultural infrastructure truly fit into the city. Such as our capital's landscape and city history. These choices often imply that general city infrastructure typically planned years in advance are incapable of accommodating monuments and memorials. Which are also important to our island and the redevelopment of our capital. A monument or memorial which ascribes its intrinsic value should must be treated with reverence and respect. And must not be ignored and are crucial to retaining community memory. Their preservation and continued connection to the community should be identified as a priority. For revitalizing and embracing communities, expressing important community values and highlighting the common cultural heritage of our island and our capital city of Hagatna. Monuments and memorials should be managed, maintained and invested in as carefully as other pieces of city infrastructure. The values connected to monuments or memorials can and should be enhanced by policy decisions that determine placement. Enhance design, provide for maintenance and strengthen the common memory of our people and our history. By lumping all of these monuments and memorials into one location, we dishonor their memory and sacrifice, not giving the honor and respect their sacrifice credits and deserves. Just like planting a tree in the right place, so does our monuments and memorials must be deliberate on its placement. The HRA recognized this and ensured that monuments, memorials, parks and green spaces were given a thorough review and incorporated into its master plan. Additionally, the publication news accounts and Legislative Bill One Eighty-four dash Thirty-Six provides that a monument will be built. For the Order of the Purple Heart Guam Chapter thirteen fifteen, Guam Pacific Island Regional Gold Star Families Monument. And more than likely, which would more than likely be approved. However, this action plan does not consider what plans and projects the HRA has. For the overall Hagatna area such as the pedestrian overpass. The footprint of this project extends to the current Purple Heart Memorial and the Korean Conflict Memorial to, uh, due to the federal requirement for accessibility. Lastly, DCA. That is a request that this esteemed committee and the Guam Gold Star families. Also consider these other locations within our capital city to honor our heroes, our fallen and our Gold Star families. There are three lots. Uh, that are also potential candidates. Uh, they are attached in my testimony. They include West Hagatna Bay Lot fourteen forty-three dash one in Hagatna. San Ramon Esperanza Street and West O'Brien Drive Santa Cruz Hualali area. Uh, we also request that Bill One Eighty-four dash Thirty-Six be referred to the HRA Board of Commissioners for its integration into the monuments. And parks component of the Hagatna Master Plan. We hope that DCA has provided some insight and recommendation on future memorials and monuments. For our fallen ones. Should you require assistance, please contact me or our department. Um, again, in summary. Uh, you know, we do not object to the erection of a monument. We think that it is necessary and it is a honorable action that we would support. Uh, I just think that it's, it is important for us to consider the longevity of the monument. I guess my biggest fear is that. You know, should we erect a monument in Skinner Plaza? And you know, if other monuments are going to be erected, there will, is there potential to to move this monument, which I think is inappropriate? Uh, I think it's important for us to consider, you know, ten years, twenty years out. How will we maintain this monument and can it remain intact and in place? I think that that's something that, you know, the the families themselves would appreciate. Thank you for your time, senators. Thank you, uh, veterans and those of you who provided testimony.
Uh, thank you very much, Melvin. Uh. As a matter of respect, I I want to go ahead and allow the speaker. Uh, to uh. Present our comments or whatever input that she wants to uh, put on.
Senator Turla, I could yield to the sponsor, Senator St. Augustine. I'd like to yield to the sponsor. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Speaker. Um, you know, I have no comments on reference to what Mr. Bauta brought up. Um, I'm here for the Gold Star. I don't believe the Gold Star family monument is going to move. I believe that's going to move anywhere. Once we place it. There's enough of us on Guam that are Gold Star family supporters. It's just like, no difference. I received the text from Mr. Abe Mora. I'm looking into that general, that Gold Star family license plate. Because when families and parents pass, we need to continue the legacy. We continue to remember our fallen heroes. And other than that, uh, thank you, Madam Speaker and Mr. Chair. Um, I'll wait until I'll do my closing statement. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Speaker, you go ahead if you.
Thank you very much. I'm very grateful to all of you who have testified today. Uh, particularly Mr. Mora on behalf of his own family and all the Gold Star families and for all of. You for your service and for your work in particular on this monument and in support of this monument. I know that the Gold Star families on Guam have been. Working towards this for several years. I was at the governor's office. When, you know, um, very early on in the in the governor's term and we, they had made an announcement that this was going to be built at Adalup. So I was very surprised when the discussion came around again about locating it at Skinner's, but I'm in full support of that if. And I did talk to several Gold Star families and they are in support of that as well. And that the, they have the support of the. Um, military order, the Purple Heart. To assist them and and to share space with them or. Um, I guess they find it fitting that these uh, memorials be be near each other. Um, so I have no objection to that. I I I understand the concerns of the HRA. Melvin, if you could just clarify, are you testifying on behalf of HRA? Was that HRA testimony or or?
No, man. No, it's just, it just considers the role of HRA. I think that the concern really more is the. If if there is a potential, I I don't, I haven't heard from directly from HRA and this is just working off of what is on record regarding the master plan. And I think that that's only, that's really my concern. And I think that that's only, that's really my concern, right? There that there is a master plan for the redevelopment of Hagatna putting over this, which is associated with the accessibility to the memorials that are in existence in Skinner Plaza. I guess I'm just, you know, I just want to be mindful and I just wanted to state for the record, you know, the impact of the master plan on the potential of this placement of the memorial. Again, we don't object to the the memorial being erected at Skinner Plaza. And if that's something that the gold star families prefer, you know, that's not for for me to decide. Uh, we're just uh trying to be mindful of uh the planning and the the policy and how it impacts the longevity of the memorial. Again, we don't, you know, the last thing we want is for uh a memorial to have to be moved if if it is in conflict with the master plan.
All right. Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify who who it was you were testifying on behalf of. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
I am um again, so when I was doing research, I was also routing a bill very similar to this. Uh, so I'm glad that the bill, you know, has been introduced already. But this is a, yeah, so my understanding going to be done in conjunction with the Herschel Woody Williams Medal of Honor Foundation, together with gold star families, not just from Guam, but but in the Pacific Island region that we are in. And um, so I want to thank you, Mr. Ono, everyone, uh, everyone rightfully commends you for your dedication and work uh on this project as well and and to all of you who testified. And so um uh was pointing out to me, I guess, if we could just clarify that they they were not going to put uh a list of the names of those uh who had passed away and that these types of memorials are for the families. And so it says gold star families and it's uh, but I I very much support this place for them uh to for the families to to, you know, pay tribute, to mourn, to continue to remember. But I think it's very important uh that we state as a legislature that is the policy of um, you know, the people of Guam, that we also support this. We want our future generations to remember the tremendous sacrifice that has been made by these individuals, by their families and and by the people of Guam. So I want to thank you again and I support this.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Uh, we would like to go to the minority leader, Senator Chris Dennis. Chris, go ahead, sir.
This is Masi, Mr. Chairman, Senator Turela, and um to the sponsor of this bill, one eighty four thirty six. I'm humbled and honored that you included me as a co-sponsor. And I am absolutely in full support of this bill. You know, Mr. Chairman, being in this type of the hearing is one of those that I really enjoy because I feel like I'm amongst friends. Um, you know, and I, Tim Ono, thank you so much for leading this effort. Um, you know, Frank Florrig, uh, my chairman at Guam Housing and a longtime friend, uh, you know, with his heartfelt testimony and his sacrifice also that he's given over the years to take care of Special Olympics and so many wonderful things he does in the community. And and so I don't know what it is, Mr. Chairman, but every time I'm around veterans, I feel safe. And I'm just glad to be part of this family uh today. You know, um, uh, to Mr. Kindiff, I I want to thank you for urging us to take time every day to say a prayer. You know, my my brother serves on board ship on the USS Nimitz. Uh, my nephew, um, you know, whose father is buried at Veteran Cemetery, who I helped raise, uh, is now a pilot of training, you know, our our sailors onboard, uh, you know, in the U S Navy. My youngest son just graduated as a comeback medic and is now serving on the front lines of of taking care of those, uh, you know, who have uh trying to prevent getting COVID. So I'm well aware every day of the sacrifices and the prayers that are needed for those who serve, but most especially for families uh who whose family members have given that ultimate sacrifice. So I fully support this bill and I thank you for all the veterans that testified today. And um, you know, Mr. Bora, I I I completely disagree with your perspective. Uh, I I don't think any individual would ever even move one finger to move this monument uh once it's built. The honor and the dignity that will be there in that solemn place, as we've heard from the testimony from all these brave veterans, uh, I I respectfully disagree. And I think that every single one of us on Guam, just like the Purple Heart Memorial, will make sure that it's maintained properly uh and and that it will never, not not one square inch of that thing will be moved as long as us Samoras and Guamanians and all of the region are alive with that honorable memorial. I had to put that on the record, Mr. Chairman. I objected to that testimony and I believe that we will put an honorable uh monument up and we will all serve and work hard to make sure that that thing is taken care of. This is Masi, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Chris. And now we'll go to the chairperson of C O R, Senator Amanda Shelton. Go ahead, Senator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you to the author of the bill for allowing me to be a co-sponsor and to everyone who's here today to testify. I really appreciate the testimony and I know that this has been a project uh in the works for a long time and I'm honored that we're able to uh do the work here in the legislature uh to to see this come to fruition. And I know that um this is a a spot that has been talked about for a little while. I know that we we were anticipating it being at Atalou, but I think that this is uh a spot that the gold star families will will very much appreciate. And uh seeing it every day as we pass by to come to the legislature will also be uh an honor for us, I think, uh to be able to uh remember uh these uh gold star individuals and their families in addition to uh the Purple Heart uh recipients uh every day when we pass by. I want to thank you all for for your work to uh allow this to happen. So many different advocates who have not given up over the years and have reminded us day in and day out that this is something that we need to continue to pursue and to fight for. Uh, and I I thank you uh for pushing us to do this. This is Masi.
Uh, thank you, Senator Shelton. Uh, at this time, uh, we're gonna go to uh Senator Frank Blas, sir. Go ahead, sir. Melvin, I know you have your hand up. Uh, we're gonna do this right after we complete the uh the senator's uh comment and then we'll go back to you, Melvin. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Melvin is gonna be very short to Tim. You did it, buddy. Okay, I remember that we had coffee a couple of times many years ago and uh back and forth. Congratulations. It's gonna move, okay? You, you, Darren and and all the people, you did it. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Uh, at this point in time, we'll go to uh one of my favorite Senator, Tony Ada. Sirs, go ahead, Tony.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, to the author of the bill, Senator San Augustine, thank you for including me as part of the co-sponsors. Mr. Chairman, this this project, um, you know, I was reading on the Woody Williams Foundation website that this project should have broken ground, broke ground since last year March. And I think that had this moved forward, that, you know, those mothers, the two mothers who are no longer here to see this project would have been here then. Let's not delay this project any longer, Mr. Chairman. Let's get this uh bill to be uh the committee report to be completed. Let's get it circulated and let's get it onto our next session agenda so that we can put these these the 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 uh the project into play and and let's get it built so that the families can be able to see the project completed before we lose any more families of these gold star um of the gold star family. Uh, Mr. Ono, thank you for continuing to move this project forward. Uh, Frank, with your help and guiding him to Senator San Augustine to uh, you know, get this bill introduced and, you know, uh, move it from Atalou down to Skinner's Plaza. And I and I think that is the most appropriate place for it. You know, we have our our Guam militia uh found a uh memorial down in that area, but in uh in the park there, we have the Purple Heart. This is a place where we should recognize our heroes. Nowhere else but there, you know, and I think that uh we can go ahead and move this project forward, Mr. Chair. Like I said, and let's get this on for our next session agenda. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Senator Tony. At this point in time, we're gonna go to Senator Chellu Titoli, sir, ma'am. Go ahead.
Sir, ma'am, I guess you got them all covered there. Thank you. See this Masi.
No, the search for Senator Tony. The ma'am is for you.
See this Masi, Mr. Chair. I'd like, I'd like to thank you. I'm glad to see this is moving forward because I did sign on on Speaker Turela's measure to to recognize the intent of this legislation and um but when the new bill came around, some of us was in privy to being a sponsor. So uh to the real Joe San Augustine up on the quarter, uh, thank you for mentioning that. I'm sure that anybody um in the in the legislature would be proud to be a sponsor of this legislation. And I'm hoping that the the sponsor, the bill sponsor of this legislation will incorporate every senator to be a part of this very important uh monument that will represent so many of our soldiers and, you know, let's not take advantage of our freedom. And this, I think this memorial will allow for us to remember um that we are not given freedom for free and these people gave their lives so that we can have it. I I thank you, Tim. I I know your timeline. It was very aggressive, uh, but he, I think he's decided, started this November two thousand nineteen. And then you had this timeline going all the way down with all the fundraising efforts and you still, even through COVID, you stuck through that timeline. I'm very, very impressed with your work. No wonder, you know, Bill Kuntliff, who were on earlier, uh, and even Frank, uh, everyone who uh testified to your um, you know, the good work and hard work you did. I'm very impressed with what you were able to accomplish and and keeping that timeline. On top of jumping out of an airplane, that was amazing, carrying all those flags uh at the same time. You know, you must have been, uh, what did they call that? The ranger, the army ranger? You know, out of Fort Bragg, they have uh many of those uh skydivers that come down that jump out of the plane. So that was very impressive to see that. Thank you uh for that. You know, um, it it's also, a lot of people don't realize how the gold star came about and how it started back in World War, you know, not World War, but during the Civil War and how every member who was a uh serving in the military was given actually a blue star. And uh the passing of uh that individual while serving, yes, right on. That is so cool. Thank you, Tim, for showing that to us. And uh the blue star would turn into gold uh if they lost their life while serving in the military. And um it's it's a tradition that's gone way back and I'm very surprised that we haven't had this memorial uh up, you know, sooner uh to represent. And I greatly appreciate including all of the Pacific Islands uh in our neighborhood, you know, our islands. So I greatly appreciate for incorporating that. That was such a great addition to it. Um, I saw the design. It's beautiful design. Um, and it's gonna, you know, sitting right next to the uh Purple Heart is just a great opportunity. Yes, thank you too, Chris. I was hoping you would show it. So for those who are watching, um, it's the one to the left. And it it'll um be in that area, you know, and I and I think Melvin too, I have to say, Melvin, um, your concern is greatly appreciated because knowing the fact that in the event something happens and it may change, uh, that your interpretation is not to have it moved. It should never be moved when something's been put up like that. So I'm hoping that the Hagatna Restoration recognizes this when you do get together and discuss with them. I know that uh your your concern is is well intended. And um my my concern at this point, and this is a question to Tim. Oh, look at that. That is so, thank you so much for showing that. It would take a moment so everyone can see this that Tim would Timish uh showing. Very beautiful. Thank you, Tim. Tim, um, I do have a question with regards to, I'm sure you did much planning, but have you had a chance to work with DPW on, you know, constructing this and getting all the permits together? Can you tell me a little bit, uh, if you need any assistance? Because sometimes DPW can be very slow at moving things along and getting things approved, but have you been working with DPW at all?
Well, I have given them a heads up and like I said, and like you said, I I I have been working at this for a little bit. And I know the process takes quite a bit when you try to work through DPW and all the government agencies. But um, I've been assured by Lieutenant Governor when I met with him that he would help facilitate that. And if you and the rest of the senators sharing this legislature can also help facilitate that process, we would really, really appreciate it. But um we have the drawings pretty much already made and we have some pro bono engineers locally who will stamp it off as we move forward through the permitting process. Uh, I didn't mention this before, but Woody Williams has would be if we do the uh site dedication on the twenty fourth of this month. September, by the way, is also Gold Star Family Month. Last week, I think, uh, of September is been designated Gold Family Week. But Woody has assured us that he would definitely make time to participate and we would be honored. He said he would be honored to be our special guest speaker at ninety years young, ninety eight years young.
Wow.
To participate in this most most historic occasion, to be hearing from a part of the greatest generation who came and also helped liberated Guam, I think would be an honor. We had the honor. He called in actually the day before Liberation Day and spoke, uh, got interviewed by Ray Gibson on his show. And then if you guys can pull that up, you can hear it for about half an hour of him recounting his experience when he came ashore on Aston Beach, um, lost some of his friends. But it's just really, this is part, this is historic and he'd said his grandson specifically, Chad Graham, said that when he does come, the national media will travel with him. Because this is historic for him. He's like the last surviving World War Two Medal of Honor recipient. And uh they want to document this. And um I'm hearing from his grandson that each time he goes to an unveiling, he always mentions Guam. Those guys in Guam are are doing, uh, you know, a similar project, but he always mentions that. And if you look at his website, there's about a hundred and sixty four active communities and uh all throughout all fifty states. That one in the bottom there that says U S territory, that's us. We will be the first U S territory. But I also asked this question to them. I said, out of all hundred and sixty four, has there ever been a law passed by the governor that required this? So I guess we're breaking new ground as the U S territory of this does get passed. And we're hoping the governor supports this and 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 signs it in the law. But I want to thank you all for co-sponsors of this, especially um Senator Joe San Augustine. If I, I'd be also remiss if I didn't mention Mr. Johnny Atu, Johnny Atulai, Johnny Titanow. Since he gets on Vet Talk sometimes and um, you know, he was the one that kind of put it, put a little bug in our ear about trying to put this at Skinner Plaza. And because the names, if you see, if you've been to that Purple Heart Memorial Wall, has all the names etched on there already. So it kind of fits appropriate for all the fallen. And, you know, I'm seeing names like Shim, Shimizu, Cruz, all those names are the families, you know, are the fallen. The families, the Gold Star Family Memorial would be the ones kind of, you know, solemnly appropriate to be right next to each other. And and um we also want to put with signs up there that event that lets people know that this is not a place to really party and track out, but to to protect and treat with dignity. Anyways, that, I don't know if I answered your question, but I really appreciate it if the uh public DPW can help facilitate the process so we can do a groundbreaking. And if the groundbreaking happens or the unveiling, Woody, God willing, will be on Guam to do the unveiling with us. We we pray for that, that the Lord keeps him um around for for a few more years. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you so much, Simon, for all your hard work. And I'd like to thank also, you know, Rick, who's here, Bill, who is here. Of course, Francisco Frank, you know, for testifying. Um, and uh, Mr. Mora, greatly appreciate opening up this public hearing with your story. Uh, that was very touching. I greatly appreciate. And of course, the real Joe San Augustine. Don't worry. I think we're gonna get everyone uh to uh be a sponsor of this uh legislation uh to be co-sponsors of this legislation. If we had given. If we had given the opportunity, but now during on session floor, we'll, we will definitely ask for the sponsor of this legislature to include us as well, as well. Again, I appreciate everyone's testimony today. Thank you, Tim, too, for showing the pictures up early. That's, that's excellent. Excellent work that you're doing. Also, Darren Cruz, I know he's been very instrumental, Darren, with regards to the fundraising efforts moving forward. So again, appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Chair, Sidoos Masi, and good luck to everyone. Thank you to Melvin for being here. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Senator. I'm still trying to figure out who's the real Joe St. Augustine. Anyway, let's go to the second, to Senator Joanne Brown. Senator Joanne, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and certainly thank you to everyone who's come and testified for Bill 184. I think anyone who has lost anyone that they've loved very much in the service of our country really feels esteemed. You know, the importance of why we need these recognition of those families and those that have served and those, more importantly, that we've lost. My godfather, Mark Frederick Biagini, was killed in action in Vietnam. His year marks 49th year since he passed away. But I have to tell you, for all of us that have suffered those losses, and I know there are many families on Guam that have gone through this loss, it lives with you your entire life. You know, monuments are important to recognize that. And certainly for everyone who's lived through this, for every family member that's lost a loved one, it's life-changing. It's not just what these monuments are constructed from, it's what they represent. And it's very important because we want our younger people, those that have yet to be born, to understand what it is that our people have gone through collectively. You know, be it World War II, Korea, Vietnam, the conflicts we've had in the Middle East and Iraq, and Iran, and Afghanistan. Anyone that we've lost in the line of duty, particularly in conflicts. It's very hard, you know, it comes apart, you know, when people say freedom isn't free. It's very true. Freedom is not free. And there are those that have laid their lives on the line and have given up to give us the freedom that each of us have today and that we, we enjoy and sometimes take for granted. So I'm very supportive of this legislation. I'm not currently a co-sponsor. I don't think Senator St. Augustine has provided us all the opportunity. I'm sure when this legislation is, is put on the floor of the legislature, as Senator Tello said, we will be given the opportunity to, to also be co-sponsors. I don't doubt every member of the Guam Legislature, Mr. Chair, will, will support this legislation. We look forward to it. It's a long time in coming. And, and it's also realizing that the, you know, when you, when you have someone in service, it, it's a whole family that becomes a part of that. I mean, my dad is the, you know, my dad served in the Red Marine Force in Vietnam. He fortunately was able to come home. And my, my godfather was not on his first tour. He was in the second tour in Vietnam. And it was a conversation they had had together because both of them obviously had been there and had talked about whether or not he should go back. My godfather should go back. And he made the decision to go back. And unfortunately, it was a tremendous loss to our family. It's one that we still all, still all feel to this very day. So I look forward to the construction of this monument. And thank you to Mr. Ono and everyone that's been involved in putting it together because it's truly from the heart. You know, we can never understand, never rationalize the loss and it never disappears in our life. It's something we carry with us always. And certainly to have this there for families to come to reflect, to recognize, to acknowledge, and sometimes just depend, spend some silent moments of reflection. Those are all very important things in our life, especially when the loss is so deep and so real. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. And thank you to everyone here who's testified and who's been behind this effort to move forward this monument. And I recognize the comments that were made earlier by Mr. Juan Pat Borja concerning the, the maintenance and, and long-term, you know, maintenance of, of, of the monument. I think we all need to look at those issues. They're important. But I think what, what needs to be first and forefront in our minds is what this rock, what this monument truly represents and what it represents to all the families who've lost loved ones in the service of our country. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity to come out and build 184.
Thank you very much, Senator Joanne. I just wanted to go back to Melvin because I think he wanted not, not to rebuttal, but to reinforce, you know, his testimony. So Melvin, go ahead. You got the time.
Sidoos Masi, Senator, I'll make it brief. I just wanted to clarify on the record for Senator Duenis that, you know, my testimony may have been misconstrued. Maybe I didn't come off as articulately as I would like. You know, we are not in opposition to this effort or this bill. As I stated in the beginning of the testimony, we support this effort and this bill. I think that I'm just, you know, what I'm trying to do is just raise what I believe is a valid concern and a potential threat to the effort. And I think it's something that needs to be considered. And my, we need to be mindful of it on a policy level. I think that maintenance and long-term preservation of something as important and significant as this is, is, is relevant. And it's something that we have to be aware of. All I'm asking for is the consideration and the thoughtfulness and the application of the policy that is going to follow and support this effort. Sidoos Masi, Senator.
Melvin, thank you very much. Before I close, I, I would now allow Senator Joe St. Augustine to give his closing remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And for Senator Tello, there's only one Joe St. Augustine here. My Uncle Joe is Jose St. Augustine. Just for clarity, Jose is, that other Joe St. Augustine that's listed is actually Jose. So Jose St. Augustine, familiar in Palau, that's my father's cousin, even though he's younger. It's not my fault. But anyway, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make it clear and, and thank you, Tim. You know, I, I appreciate, and also Frank, for getting me involved, you know, and eight, I'm, I am looking, we are looking at the, the Gold Star's license plate. We're looking at the, the, the law that exists today. And we may be introducing that, I request for amendment on the bill, on that, on that law to include siblings. Because it only ends at, at, at the parents. And, and we need to include because that's only, that's how we continue the legacy, continue remembering everyone. And I, I believe all our, all my colleagues will support that. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for your expeditions, actually on Bill 184-36, you are. I hope for your committee report to, committee to report on the bill for this upcoming session so we may continue to be honored the Gold Star families, which is on the 24th will be the, the Declaration of the Gold Star Day. I'm correct, right, Tim? It's the Gold Star Family Day and that we're going to, the, we've been in communication with the administration. They'll be, we're working in conjunction with them to have the site dedication on that day, that morning. And I also like to thank the Gold Star families for their continued support to our nation and our island. We are grateful for your family sacrifices. I ask the people of Guam to keep in mind that 24th is nationally dedicated as Gold Star Family Day. Sidoos Masi, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Also, Senator, if you don't mind, I, I would like to include all 15 senators to be co-sponsor.
We'll, we'll do that on the floor, Mr. Chair. We'll introduce that.
Joanne Brown, this one. Okay?
Mr. Chair, if I may. Is it?
Okay, Tim, go ahead.
If I may, I think former Congressman Underwood, Dr. Underwood, was, was, I got to provide testimony as well in support of this. And also Mr. Rick Cruz, who is the Vice President of the Military Order of Purple Heart. He mentioned that he had sent in his written testimony. I'm not sure if it's going to be read during this testimony or when you guys talk about this on the floor. But those were, were submitted earlier. And in, in answer to the question of somebody mentioned about the maintenance cost of this thing in the future, in perpetuity, the Herschel Woody Williams, as long as it's still in existence, will be responsible for this. And we're doing this. And so some of the funds we're raising is, is, it goes towards that. And before I close, if any of you are interested in also supporting this and getting a brick, you can do that. I can make it happen for you. It's, it's a donation, minimum of $300, and you can get your name engraved on it. All these bricks and pavers will be incorporated into the foundation of the memorial. And thank you all again for, for the opportunity to be able to just talk about this, this project. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. In closing, I would like, is there anybody else that wants to speak? Okay, in closing, I would like all of you to, who participated in today's virtual public hearing on Bill 184-36, you are. And if you have written testimony, you can email it, email it to Senator Pito at SenatorJPtoli.com or hand deliver it to my office at MVP Center Unit 102777, Route 4, Sinoaneguam. And the, the time now is actually 11:29. Thank you all. Thank you very much for your participation. And hopefully we can expedite the, the construction of this, this monument. Thank you very much.